Welcome to the June 20th, 2017, meeting of the Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. We will begin with the invocation by Pastor Gary Reynolds of the First Church of the Nazarene, followed by the flag salute.
Oh gracious God, we are mindful that you have invited all who would seek wisdom to find it in you. And so we pray for these elected leaders, that you would shower down upon them in their conversations and their decisions and their voting, a measure of wisdom that keeps us very mindful of the fact that there are those who count on them to be a voice for them. We thank you that you give generously to us all. And so our thanks is to you, the one who is the source of our wisdom, that you might grant it to us. We receive it humbly, and we thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call please.
McCarron?
Here.
Schmaestra? Russell?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
With that, I'll make a short comment. If you'll notice, Erlene Schmaestra is not with us. She had a death in the family, which she is, with her family is attending to, and so our prayers need to be with Erlene and her family during this time, and they certainly are for me, and hopefully everything will, everyone else will join in that. Are there any presentations or proclamations?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is the visitor's section of the meeting. This is for visitors who would like to come and speak on a non-agenda item before the council. Is there anyone who wishes to do so? You don't have any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay. Okay, in that case, we will then move in to recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket, this item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all of the authority members, then that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 6th, 2017, and the notice of exercise of option to extend municipal solid waste landfill disposal services contract with the Oklahoma City Waste Disposal, Inc., a waste connection of Oklahoma, Waste Connections of Oklahoma Company through July the 31st, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item 2A, presentation and acceptance of the 2015-2016 financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors.
Mayor and members of the council, I'm Lonny Heim with HBC CPAs, here to present the audit of the June 30, 2016, financial statements. I'm going to try to be real brief, because I know you have a full agenda and a lot of things is going on tonight, so I'll go through my quick version, and then allow you to ask any questions. If there's anything that we'd like to go over in terms of the financial statements, the numbers themselves, Frank and I visited today, and he'd be more than willing to go over the details of the numbers if anyone so chooses, or we could do that at a later time. But really what I'm here to cover is our auditor's report on the financial statements that were prepared by the city with the assistance of Crawford and Associates, presented to us as the financial statements representing the activities and the financial position as of June 30, 2016, and for that year ended. And so we engaged to perform the audit, we visited the field for several weeks, and sent out correspondence to third parties verifying certain accounts and activities. And then we concluded the audit and issued our opinion on the financial statements, which is contained on page 5. And there's a discussion about the report, discussion about management's responsibilities, discussion about our responsibilities, and then at the bottom of page 5, the opinion paragraph. And opinions is plural, because there's several reporting units or entities, if you will, that we report on, so it's a plural, because we do issue separate opinions on each of those. So in our opinion paragraph, we say, "In our opinion, financial statements referred to present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of governmental activities, business activities, major fund, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information," and the changes in financial position for the year then ended. So basically, what that means is a clean opinion, there's no qualifications or exceptions to our report with regard to the financial statements. Page 6 discusses some of the other matters that we're required to address, specifically one thing is how, what responsibility are we taking for supplementary information and other information, and then a discussion about our other report included in this audit. So summarizing again, a clean opinion on the financial statements for the year ended 2016, fiscal year ended 2016.
Were there any items of note, specifically?
Back in, we'll move on to the report on internal control and compliance, and this is what I often refer to as a byproduct report, in other words, we're specifically engaged to audit the financial statements, however, when we look at the financial statements, and we do transaction testing and tests of account balances, we look for internal control weaknesses, and so we have identified two of those, and I might mention that these are repeat findings from '15. So, you know, there hasn't been that much time passed since we presented the '15 report, the revised '15 report, and so there wasn't a lot of time to react to the findings, and we've had discussions with the staff and with Crawford and Associates in attendance, and how they're going to address some of these matters, so I feel like, you know, some of these things will be addressed and resolved.
What do you think, they will be addressed, or you feel that you are, we are addressing them?
I think you are addressing them, yeah. And they will be, and I'm not, you know, I'm not too going to say that they'll be resolved by the end of '17, but, because some of these are, you know, pretty monumental things that have to be dealt with, so a few of them will be, though, and they'll be resolved by, I would feel like they're going to be resolved in the '17 report, so. So the two that I'm addressing as material weaknesses are just the recording of debt. Again, this is a finding that we had on the '15 report, the recording of debt activity from the trustee bank accounts that have not been recorded in the past, and then the accounting for fixed assets, capital assets, which has to do with maintaining records as you go throughout the year and not, you know, six months after.
Trying to fix it at the end of the year?
Right.
So you identified two material weaknesses?
Two weaknesses in internal control, there were four compliance issues, and compliance has to do with, you know, dealing with laws, regulations, contracts, agreements. Three of the four were self-reported, so nothing, nothing really that...
Lonny, can you reference these, so we can follow along?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. That's on page 94, 95.
Those were the first two that you talked about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, and then on page 96 through 99 are the compliance issues, which, three of those are repeat, on page 96, number 3, 4, and 5 are repeat findings. Number 3 has to do with bid solicitation, and that, you know, those occurrences were early in fiscal year '16.
Do you feel like those are holdover things that came as a result of?
Yes, sir.
Of the audit last year that we faced?
Yeah, we, yes, we examined transactions throughout the year, as you know, so things were improving toward the end of the fiscal year, and I think you were in compliance with the transactions that we reviewed, and of course, we don't review everything, but yes, with the transaction, we reviewed in the latter part of the fiscal year, there was compliance, so. Number 6 has to do with, pardon me, let me think, of certain funds, and this is reported in the footnote, certain funds that exceeded their budgets. Did I say number 6? I meant number 4, that's on page 97. And on page 98?
Are those the adjustments we're looking at soon?
I'm sorry?
No, which has nothing to do with...
Yeah, okay, yeah. Page 98 has to do with sales tax ordinance establishing 25 percent, 25 percent sales tax reserve, and that's, again, a carryover, and that, I think, is another one that will be...
Yeah, this is the utilization of the reserve funds?
Right.
That we all addressed, but...
Yeah, we addressed, we addressed that last year, and...
This was not addressed, but there was utilized, specifically, the council was unaware of that at that time, and we have addressed it, but...
Yes.
And built reserves back, but at the present time, in this audit, it was not...
In this audit, early, you know, in the year, it was not, not being addressed.
But it is at this time?
At the end of the, at the end of the '16 fiscal year.
At this time, is that correct?
At this time being the end of the fiscal year '16, obviously, we haven't looked at anything in '17 yet, so. And I'm confident that, you know, that has turned around, but can't speak to '17 until I see it, or until we see it. And then the six, number 6 has to do with some funds that weren't budgeted, and that was self-reported, again, I'm sure that would, that will be resolved, so. Then our last report is on, is actually on, prior to, before that...
Lonny, I just, you said there were four compliance issues, three of which were self-reported, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there was obviously a fourth one, which was...
Which was the 25 cent sales tax thing, yeah, or 2.25, 2.25 of 1 cent sales tax issue, not 25, yeah.
25 million.
Right. Okay, so then our last report is one that sometimes does appear and sometimes doesn't. If you receive federal, if you expend federal funding of more than $500,000, then you're required to have an audit in accordance with uniform guidance issued by the federal government, so we, you know, we look at the program, the requirements of the program, the audit requirements that the federal government has us do, fulfill, and so you did have disaster recovery grants in this particular year totaling 700, you expended $714,000.
What page are you looking at?
I'm sorry, I keep jumping around here and not, not getting you to the page. This, okay, the report, let's go to the report first, page 91 is where the report is. And our report describes, you know, the findings that we've already discussed, but however, we were also looking for compliance issues with regards to the federal program that we audited, the disaster recovery grant program that was received as a part of the storm damage, and the government, Department of Homeland Security reimbursed you for, so there's $714,000 spent with regard to that, and that's on page 93. See that second category, US Department of Homeland Security disaster recovery grants, two grants with the same CFD number of 97.036, total expended 714,000, total awarded 773, almost 774,000. So those are the funds that we audited.
So that was the special report that you prepared?
Yes, on page 91 and 92.
Okay, that goes...
And we found no instances of non-compliance with regard to those federal funds that were So that's, again, that's a good thing, no compliance issues with regard to expenditure of federal funds, and that, those are our three reports, and I apologize for jumping around a little too much, but I look at a lot of these things, and I always think everybody's following along.
So I guess what you're telling us in all three of the, you feel like, number one, we have no real compliance issue, and there are three different levels of compliance issues, and I guess, would you categorize everything that we have outstanding?
Okay, so the finding, let's go back to findings.
Page?
Page number, page number 94, no, I'm sorry, those are weaknesses. So on page number 96, this is the first compliance finding, and that is, that is dealing with local and state laws and compliance therewith, and could, in certain instances, could have federal oversight, too, but in this particular case, we're talking about contracts that were violations of state, or local and state.
So are these holdovers from last year?
Yes, sir.
Or is this something else?
So then the other, item number 9, on 97, 98, and 99, okay, let's start with 97, that's a state, state law compliance issue. 98 is a local ordinance compliant issue, and 99, again, is a state compliance issue, so. So of the four, one, both local and state, two state, and one just solely local.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if you recall, on page 96, the items we're talking about were the goods and services that we, hadn't been discussed at great length that previously were allegedly bid and what have you, with not properly bid, according to not only state law, but according to our own ordinances, and these were brought to your attention previously, and so this carried over into the early '15 budget. And when you go to the number 97, city prepares its budget, and it says, "Financial statements," and this is similar to the same audit that had been given previously, is that expenditures in certain departments exceeded their appropriations, and with no adjustments and corrections made. And then the, of course, 98 is a reserve fund which was depleted, and going forward, and the, and of course, 99 is, again, is the budget act that was previously corrected, motel, employee, sales tax, the pest funds, and general reserve fund, and these have been corrected at this point in time. Our reserve fund that, on the 25 cent, just as, right now, presently, we've got about 2.4 million in that reserve fund today, so we are growing back up, and again, as we said, and I think the auditor has said, it takes a penny, and it's just going to take a number of years, it'll show great growth in it this year, but it'll be several more years at one penny sales tax before we'll get back to the $5 million and something that's previously in that, or the, you know, 25 percent of the general fund that we'd like to have, so we really predict that two to three years from now, we'll be back to where we're long, like we originally anticipated, so it'll take four to five years to build that, that fund back up to the level we'd like to have.
So it's your view, at this point, then, that all of these things, not only are now corrected, but were basically attributed to where we were over a year ago, that were a holdover from the '15?
Yes, I'd be in agreement with that. One thing I might say about Jim's comment is that, on number 5, you know, the fact that it hasn't risen to the level that it should be is not really the compliance issue, the fact that they were spinning out of it before it rose to that level, so if we roll forward to '17, and, you know, it still hasn't achieved the level that, you know, it needs to be at?
Yeah.
Then it doesn't really, that doesn't really cause a compliance issue, the compliance issue is spinning out of it before it gets there, so, and that's kind of what was happening early in the year, so.
Correct. So it's not an issue that we've done to repair it, it's a question of the fact that was damaged and was done previously?
Right, the issue is, yeah, it's the damage, the spinning out of it was continuing in this fiscal year until it was stopped, you know, and then, now it's starting to build back, so that's, you know, if you're not spinning out of it, then you're still complying, even though you haven't built it up to where it needs to be, you have, you're still complying, so.
We just can't spin out of it.
So I would, I would expect this one, for sure, to go away in '17, but of course, I haven't looked at '17, but I'm pretty comfortable that the trend was, that that's what was happening.
Sure. Sure. So when we started on page 5, you talked to us, and you said that this is a clean opinion.
Yes, sir.
So tell us, what does clean opinion mean?
Clean opinion in accounting and auditing, gobbledygook, I guess, is that it's presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Fairly means in all material respects, basically, doesn't mean that it's, you know, that there might not be errors, but our opinion is that it is fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles promulgated by the Government Accounting Standards Board, so.
Okay, so the term clean opinion has to do with the practice that you use to prepare this?
Clean opinion is just a...
Is that a compliment to the city, or to the way that this was prepared?
No, that's a, well, it's not, not, it's just a way of saying that there were no exceptions to our report, and they, and that is because of something the city did, it has nothing to do with anything we did, it has something, you know, everything to do with what the city did, and that is in the presentation of their financial statements, so.
Okay, so what is an exception to the report?
An exception would be if there was something that wasn't in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles.
Okay.
A good example might be if you left off your capital assets completely from the balance sheet, that would be a material misstatement that would cause an exception to your report.
Okay, so if someone wants to go back and look at this at some time, what we're looking at is the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, and this is our annual physical statement and independent auditor's report for June 30, 2016.
Correct.
And then we're referencing the page numbers, so, okay, so when you say there isn't any, so then I take that in layman's terms, there aren't any problems, that's what a clean report means?
Clean opinion on the financial statement, or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements themselves, the numbers that we're presenting and the notes that accompany those numbers.
Okay, then what are, when we look at page numbers 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, and 99, what are those?
Those are, those are where internal control and compliance issues are addressed.
Okay, so...
They may, they haven't risen to a level that impacted the financial statements because they were corrected. Again, another example, capital assets recording is not done on a consistent basis throughout the year, however, at the end of the year, Crawford and Associates comes in, spends a great deal of time with the city's staff's help, accumulating those records, bringing them up to a level where they are acceptable, they are, they are acceptable in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards, so. So those are issues that are either reportable conditions or material weaknesses in internal control that could have caused the financial statements to be misstated if you hadn't gone in at the end of the year and addressed those issues.
Okay, so because we're addressing them, does that make this a clean opinion?
Yes.
Okay, so then page 5 has something to do with page 94, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, right? So that's the one?
It does, and also, the way it relates to those pages is that if those matters weren't addressed by the city at the end of the year, then your opinion, the results of our opinion may have been different.
Okay.
But they were, so.
So is clean opinion, is that like, I don't know, on a 10 scale, is that a...
Well, it's, you know, because everybody asks, you know, what does, presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted, we use that as a term to say, you know, things, there are no modifications, so you won't really find clean opinion in the auditing standards, but it's just a reference that, you know, auditors often use to refer to a report that's not modified.
Okay, I'm sorry this happens to be you, but the last time when I was sitting over there where Mike is, this was quite a to-do, so that's why I'm being so careful.
I understand.
Then what do the citizens of Yukon, from this clean opinion, and this independent, what do they take away from this? What, what's the takeaway for the citizens, for the taxpayers, of this clean opinion?
Well, the financial statements are representative of the city's financial condition and the operating activities that occurred throughout the year, so that's what's important to the citizens, is we want to know, does this, does this represent how things actually were, where they are at June 30, '16, and how they happen for the year end of June 30, '16? So that's their takeaway, is they get confidence, and I understand there's a history here, so, but they get confidence that the numbers are materially correct. Now, there may be some things, you know, in the statements that might, you know, things, errors that may have not been discovered, but they weren't material, because we looked at the material accounts and activities, so.
So why is it important to the taxpayers that these numbers are materially correct? What's that tell us?
I think if I'm a taxpayer that wants to know how my city is spending money, and what financial condition... Well, I mean, the budgetary basis statement is on... Okay, page seventy-one. So anyway, that's the, that's a budgetary basis. Here's what we originally budgeted after any modifications to the budget. Here's what we finally ended up budgeting.
Page...
I'm sorry, page seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
And then here's what we actually spent, and here's how it stacks up against what we budgeted versus what we actually, what actually happened, so.
And what does this tell us?
This tells us, or tells you, tells the citizens, predict, you know, if we just go to a total, a summary, predicted that you would have twenty-three million in revenue, you had twenty-six million. Predicted that you would spend twenty-five million, you spent twenty-four point seven million. And all of those categories are the same, so, and the variance in the far, far columns, so.
So that tells you that Mr. Crosby has been reasonably frugal? Is that what that tells you?
I prefer that for being tight.
Tight, okay.
Not for...
Okay, on page ninety-four, so all, so ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, all those pages, those are the compliance issues that you discussed earlier, right?
Did you include ninety-four, ninety-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Those are, ninety-four, ninety-five are weaknesses in internal control.
Okay.
And the other, and the other pages are compliance issues, so.
All right, so the ninety-four, ninety-five are weaknesses in, in internal control, and for what time period? Is that still that annual...
For, for the, for the fiscal year ended June thirty-sixteen.
Okay. And...
No, they don't break it down into months.
I understand, but I'm just, my question is, is what needs to be done? Does a policy need, change need to be implemented and has one been made? So those are my next questions. I mean, are we headed in the right, I mean, these are issues that started in two thousand and fifteen, so Mike, that's where, that's what I need to know is, have, have these been addressed? And are you, I understand that you look in these time, in these annual budgets, but I mean, are, is someone also making sure that time's not repeating itself? So moving forward into the second half of sixteen and into seventeen, have we made a policy change to address?
Yes.
Twenty sixteen one?
These are all being addressed.
Okay, and twenty sixteen two, we've...
Right.
Okay, and then...
And I, I would add that, you know, we participated in a phone conference with Crawford and, and city staff about these matters several months ago, so where they want to address and get, you know, make, make these things, correct these findings, so.
And you're...
So I'm, I'm confident...
You're satisfied, yeah, that's my question.
That they're working on it.
All right.
In further answer question, Mr. Crawford has prepared, to tell you how we're doing financially compared to other areas and how we've done over the years. Mr. Crawford has prepared a link, not lengthy, I should say, but it's about almost thirty pages of a performative, telling you how we are performing and what have you. And he will be present, hopefully in July, we are setting a time up because it's going to take a considerable amount of time to go over and present that to the council, and we will go over it in this meeting, and he'll tell you exactly how things have gone.
Okay, and that'll be during our meeting and live on...
Live on DVD.
...the citizens to see?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Well, I still want to finish, I'm sorry, Lonnie, just the last, the last, then, so these are two thousand and sixteen one and two thousand and sixteen two, we've talked about that. So can we lump in two thousand and sixteen three, two thousand and sixteen four, two thousand and sixteen five and two thousand and sixteen six? Say those are all under that same timeframe to, from two thousand and fifteen up to June of two thousand and sixteen, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and have, are you satisfied that all of these issues that we've discussed earlier are also, have they been addressed? A policy change been made or whatever and that we're addressing each one of these? Is there any one of these that this council needs to be concerned about, that we needed to help take some action, change a policy?
I, I, I can't really address that beyond sixteen, fiscal year ended June sixteen. And, and the matters we discussed, well, I will say that, that the matters we discussed in that conference with Crawford again and city staff was dealt with items one through three.
Okay, so who can answer our, or my question about four, five and six? Is that, Mr. Crosby, is that you? I just would like to be able...
Excuse me. I kind of think Mr. Crosby addressed number five in that, you know, we're not spending anything, I mean, I'm, I'm taking words out of his mouth, but we're not spending anything out of there.
We're not taking any money out of the reserve account.
Okay.
And that's what we talked about on that. As far as the budgetary accounts, uh...
Okay, so what's two thousand and sixteen?
Mr. Crawford can...
Two sixteen four, can we just go in order so there's some order?
Okay, two, two thousand and sixteen four addresses that certain departments exceeded their budget.
Okay, and how has that been, has that been addressed?
Yes, it has, John.
And how?
Well, first of all, we monitor and moving along how expenditures are going. We also have, make transfers to accounts, and you'll address some of those this evening to ensure that certain areas will not go over their expenditures.
Okay.
You have a couple of those on your agenda tonight for this fiscal year.
Okay, so it's a policy change that was made?
Right. We're, we're addressing that and make sure that no account will overspend.
And it's working well?
We feel it is, and we, Mr. Crawford, in fact, his, his firm is the one that recommended these changes or transfers be made, and, you know, and we will have a carryover again this year, and, and like I said, our reserve account has risen, and I, I can't give you the exact figure at, at the moment, but it's over two point four million dollars in our reserve.
And that's sixteen five?
Right, and so we are addressing all these in the budget, and on sixteen six, let's see where is it, the, and we, we do have a budget for our capital improvement, our hotel motel tax, and our pest funds and general reserve fund. In fact, one of the budgets that we talked about amending and we came forward tonight, if you recall, I believe there's eighty-one, eighty-something thousand dollars being transferred. There was an agreement with the internal order of police, part of the, the purchase of police cars, purchase of guns, holsters and a few things of that nature in the police fund to make sure that, and we're transferring that out because those expenditures have been made, and we're taking them out of the pest fund and transferring that to the general fund of the city to cover that cost.
Okay.
Because it was not a budget at night, in, in the original budget.
And is Crawford, are they monitoring this through the year as well to make sure that all these are being complied with?
We, we work with them all through the year. Yes, yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
So the twenty sixteen five, it will remain, appear to be noncompliant until we get to that twenty-five percent?
No.
As long as we don't spend money out of it.
It's not a compliance issue trying to build that fund up. The compliance issue is you're spending money out of it before you get to that point, so.
Yeah, we're not spending any money out of that.
Right, I know.
As long as we continue that, we will be in compliance.
But in this particular year, that was happening.
Okay.
It was, you know, and then at number six, just, there were just, well, there were three funds, four funds, that had some revenue expenditure activity, and again, this was self-reported, so we included it with our report, but that didn't have budgets, but I'm, I'm...
Did they appear other places and they just didn't have their own separate account? Was that your view of that, or...
I, I think the only issue was that, you know, at the beginning of the, this particular fiscal year sixteen, which the budget would have been passed in June of fifteen, they didn't include in the budget packet, you know, budgets for those funds. And by law, if, unless, unless you're a public trust, if you collect revenues or have expenditures, then you're required to budget by state law for any fund that has revenues or expenditures. So, anyway, that's, I don't remember the, you know, the dollar, dollar amount of activity through these funds. Of course, the public employee sales tax fund, that's, that's one of the ones that we've been talking about, but, but in the reserve funds, so.
Counsel recalls in the hotel motel tax, remember we did the Rock the Road, we had so much income, even though we showed our income was predicted to be down forty percent this year, we've been notifying you of that in the hotel motel. We also looked at the budget, looked at our budget for this next year, set out several items that we're going to spend that money for, listed the approximate amount of expenditures with the total budget for that particular item, and that's what they're addressing. There was no budget in this fifteen, sixteen years for those particular accounts, and by law you have to do that and break it down, and that's what we could do.
So if we ran into that again, would we have to go back and do a budget amendment that would create that fund if there was monies coming in, or...
Yes, if you, well, if you, if you had a fund where you didn't anticipate any activity, so you're doing your budget in June for your following fiscal year and you didn't anticipate any activity in that fund, but then something came up for, where it would have, then you would just bring a budget amendment, because you, you really don't have a budget, so you, you know, the way I see it, Frank would be able to advise you better on this, but you would have a budget amendment from, we're not spending any money to, oh, we're going to spend X dollars, but you could do that anytime during the year. You know, there's a lot of times when cities, they do a budget and then maybe they get in a, a revenue source that they didn't anticipate, so they amend their budget during the year, and that's, that's kind of what you'd be doing. You're amending it because you didn't anticipate any spending.
Prove example, if you recall, you approved that supplying for several grants. We budget for some of those grants. Those grants could come in at various amount of money, and we may have to make an amendment to adjust to whatever that grant is that we received. Our new rant, at Taylor Park, the restroom at Taylor Park, if you recall, we asked for a budget to do, build a restroom like we did over at Ranford. We don't know for sure whether we're going to get that amount of money or not, and if we do, how much, it could be above or below anticipated amount of money. Those are sidewalks for schools, bicycle trails we've applied for, several of these things that you go through, and sometimes highway safety grant for the police department, things of this nature that you go through, and you never know when grants can come available or when that money can come in at that point in time. Mr. Crawford and his group has to tell us what to do, and, and, you know, and these grants have to come before the council, be approved, but if the money is not there or we need to make an amendment, we'll have to make some adjustment. You make that amendment to your budget.
One last time, make sure I've got this correct. Other than item number six, because that was a, didn't know it was going to come up, but the other five items were items that took place early in the fiscal year after we found out about these, and now we've corrected them, but they're still there because they were in the early fiscal part of the year. With the exception of one and two, that, that was ongoing, and, and it's, again, it's a, it's a huge undertaking, so I don't want to make it sound like it's just something that you could flip a switch on and create capital asset records. There's hours and hours to build those, so I mean, it's, it's, it may extend well beyond, you know, seventeen, the fiscal year ending seventeen. However, you know, the, the important part that I think needs to be made, or a point, point that needs to be made is that, you know, staff is already starting to address the issue with the help of Crawford and Associates.
Okay.
And it's, again, on those two, the first one's not nearly as much involvement, but the capital asset record, the number two, that's, that's a huge undertaking, so. But they're addressing, the, the meeting we had, they, they indicated they're addressing the first three issues immediately, so.
So why is it important that we have a capital asset record? Or that this...
Well, it's, you know, you need to know where your, where your equipment is, what, you know, what department has it, and not, you know, six months or a year after the end of the fiscal year, so, so it's, it's, it's mainly for an accounting record, but it's also for, you know, protection of your assets, I mean...
And up to this point, we don't, at this point, we don't have that?
No, and, and it's, it's not created, it's updated annually with Crawford and Associates' assistance, but it's not kept on a real-time basis, so.
Okay, so there's a, there's an annual audit or accounting for the equipment, but there's not a month, you're suggesting it needs to be monthly?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
In our pensions, did you feel everything in the pension area was up to snuff? Did you look at that specifically when you went through it?
Yes, yes, we audited those based on actuarial presented reports, and we, we were, you know, we were able to tie the numbers for the actuary reports to the financials, so.
Well, I think previously we got the percentage that we were up to a certain level.
Oh, okay, okay.
Percentage as to...
Yeah.
How fulfilled we were on that, and...
I might let Frank address that in your next meeting, so.
I think Frank's going to address that, your performer of where, where we are.
Oh, okay, well, I was just wondering if you looked at that, and I guess Frank will also be looking at the pest accounts as well.
Correct, all that.
I'll rest those questions then.
Okay.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you. All right, any other questions?
May not from, thank you for answering my questions.
Richard?
Thank, it's been hit, all of them.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
We need a vote on two A.
We need a motion on two A. We need to take a vote.
Okay. So as to the presentation acceptance of the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second and any other discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Consider approving budget amendments for fiscal year twenty seventeen. It's item three A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second and any discussion? Okay, well, I was just wondering if you looked at that. And I guess, uh, Frank will also be looking at the pest accounts as well.
Correct, all that.
I'll rest those questions in.
Okay.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you. All right, any other questions?
May not for me. Thank you for answering my question.
Okay.
Richard?
I think it's been hit, all of them.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Item three A.
Mr. Mayor?
We need to vote on two.
We need a motion on two A. We need to take a vote.
Okay. So as to the presentation acceptance of the 2015-16 financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors, uh, do I have a motion to accept?
Some move.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Consider approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2017. It's item three A. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? And these were the amendments we just spoke about. Is that correct?
Now, these particular items are what I'd mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, Mr. Mayor. These are transfers from the water fee transferred, uh, to the, uh, general fund. And, uh, the other one is into, from sewer to sanitation and type thing from our sewer fund. And this is to adjust those accounts that Crawford Associates felt that there may be an over expenditure in order to ensure that we're still within the budget laws. All accounts are balanced. Uh, we're in good shape. We will have a nice carryover this year that you'll find out later on, uh, which means that, uh, we're going to have more money than, you know, and, uh, we did not operate in the deficit. This is to keep our balance, our budget balanced.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion, please? Seeing none, call for vote, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item four A. Consider approving resolution number YMA two zero one seven dash oh three. A resolution approving the Yukon Oklahoma Municipal Authority budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018, and establishing budget amendment authority. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item five A. Consider and take action with respect to the resolution number YMA twenty seventeen dash zero four. A resolution of the Yukon Municipal Authority, called the Authority, authorizing the execution of professional services agreements pertaining to the financing of capital improvements benefiting the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, authorizing the Authority's financial advisor to distributed big bid packages to prospective financial institutions in connection with the referenced financing and containing other provisions relating thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item six A. Consider approving amendment five to the agreement for operations, maintenance and maintenance services with Viola Water North America Central LLC, allowing for change of scope by adding the Frisco Water Tower and Booster Station and an increased fee for 2017, 2018 for an annual total fee of one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars to take effect July one, two thousand and seventeen as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item one, on the consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items which they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all the council members, that item will be heard in regular order. City manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June the sixth, two thousand and seventeen, payment of material claims in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Item C is designating the items on the attached list from the detect, technology department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. Item D, renewal of the agreement between the city of Yukon and Crawford Associates PC for the preparation of annual financial statements and general accounting and advisory assistance through June the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Item E, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen renewal participation agreement with the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, or O-MAG, workers' compensation plan in the amount of six hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Item F is the renewal of the prisoner public works project contract with the Oklahoma Department of Corrections for the assignment of Union City prisoners to public works projects through June the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen at the rate of one hundred and twenty dollars per month per prisoner. Item G is the renewal of the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Oklahoma City for the regional household hazardous waste collection program through June the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. And item H, the setting of the date for the next regular council meeting for Thursday, July the sixth, two thousand and seventeenth, at seven PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Do we have any reports of boards, commissions, or city officials today?
Not saving, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item three is the acceptance of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item four. Consider approving budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion seconded. Is there any discussion? Jim, do you want to say that we did this?
These are the same, similar motions that we talked about, uh, and several items that, uh, moving items between various accounts to adjust the budget. Uh, a prime example was, as I mentioned, the eighty-some thousand dollars for the pest accounts. That was in agreement with the, uh, internal order of police, uh, to cover cost of, uh, finish up the vehicles and, uh, items that were agreed on in the union contract.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Item five. Consider approving a resolution number two thousand seventeen dash eight. A resolution approving the city of Yukon, Oklahoma budget for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and establishing a budget amendment authority. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item six. Consider approving amendment five to the agreement for operations, maintenance and maintenance services with Viola Water North America Central LLC, allowing for change of scope by adding the Frisco Water Tower and the Booster Station, Station, and an increased fee for two thousand seventeen, eighteen for an annual total fee of one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars to take effect July one, two thousand seventeen as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call for the vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item seven. Consider awarding the contract for the Yukon Public Works Department Maintenance Facility project and the Yukon Community Support Foundation Storage Facility to Hickson Construction Company LLC in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and six dollars as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
I've got, I've got a question. Now, Jim, this is the building, this, explain this project.
There are two, two buildings, uh, on this. One will be a movement of the street facility that is presently, uh, down Fifth Street, and that'll have to be moved in order for us to build the animal control facility. Uh, the other one will be a storage building that we've got that are utilized, uh, for a lot of the Christmas activities and stuff that we have that to move our, our items in there. We do, they're just stacked on one another right now. They're not taken care of. We get a lot of items broken and what have you, and this will be a smaller building. Uh, of course, the major, it's two hundred and something thousand as opposed to the street facility, which is a lot more expensive because it'll have toilets, water, a lot of other things, you know, utilization by employees. This other building will just be a metal storage building and will only be utilized as such, sir. And it'll be, it'll be at the location of the, uh, of the old cotton gem in that area right there. That's been cleared and that's where those facilities will be constructed.
But this is part of our ongoing work with pets and people, too, to move that building ultimately. This is step one.
That's, 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 that's step one and step two after this.
Okay.
Uh, it'll, these, under the date of construction, these have to be completed by February. At that time, we will be bidding out the new animal control facility so we can start construction immediately following that completion.
Okay, well, I, I received an email, as you did, and I think, Mr., all of us did this week, about pets and people and the concern. I mean, it's an ongoing effort. You're continuing to work with them, and this is proof of it here tonight, right?
And those individuals, uh, I'm meeting with them and the advisor that was hired by the Patrick Consultant, and I'm meeting with them, I believe, uh, next week.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, vote, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item eight. Consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene into executive session for confidential communications with representatives of McAfee and Taft concerning pending and potential litigation regarding certain individuals and businesses as provided for in twenty-five OS two zero zero three, section three oh seven B four. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
We will now adjourn into executive session.
Need to invite some people?
Certainly.
Invite Mr. Crosby.
Yeah.
We'd like to.
Yeah, Mr. Puckett's here.
Yeah, we'd like to invite Mr. Puckett and Mr. Crosby.
And, uh, those gentlemen will be here.
Okay.
Invite me in to take notes?
Yes.
So do number nine. We'll call the roll and get a vote.
Yeah. Item number nine. Consider a motion to, uh, to adjourn the executive session and reconvene as the Yukon City Council.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Vote, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
I would now like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only, uh, the, only the items on the agenda were discussed. No action was taken and no votes were cast. Item number ten. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding approving, authorizing the litigation, the initiation of litigation against Grayson Bottom, RS Macham CPAs, advisors, PLLC, and/or FSW and B CPAs, PLLC, relative to actions and omissions in the performance of duties relative to city finances, the city's budget, the city's expenditures of funds, the city's financial statements, and/or the audit of the city financial statements. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
A motion seconded. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item eleven, new business. Do we have any new business this evening?
No new business tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Council discussion. Ms. Donna?
Well, I want to extend my personal condolences to Earlene and her family on the loss of their precious Debbie. And then also, I want to, um, thank those that came out to the public hearing, uh, that ODOT had recently. Uh, we encourage everyone to come out and voice your opinion. And as well, we encourage citizens to come out to the city council meetings and voice your opinions and, um, on things and issues that you have a concern or issues about. Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
I also would like, uh, everyone to be praying for Ms. Earlene's family because she's got a lot of stuff going on right now. So, all the prayers her way would be appreciated. That's all.
Mr. Alberts?
Same condolences to Earlene and to Debbie Parker and her family, uh, for her passing. Just that our prayers and our thoughts be with, with all of their family, all of their family, so.
And then I, I'd like to, uh, compliment the project at the park, uh, with the lights and the sidewalks. A lot of people have been walking around and using the lights. The lights are up and they look wonderful. So I wanted to say thank you for all of the people that were involved in, uh, making that project happen and continuing it, uh, through the last year or so. Uh, thank you very much. And then I just would encourage the citizens to get out and, and exercise, make good use of those lights and those sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And I also would, Earlene has been a good, close friend for many years, and her family has been pretty close. They attend my church. And, uh, so I do want my, my prayers to go out to them as well as everyone else here in the community because, uh, they are very, very good people. And she certainly has been a very good servant as, uh, and her daughter was a wonderful person to, uh, to know and be around as well. Uh, the forty-second anniversary of Yukon Mobile Meals Volunteer Appreciation Day is, uh, June the twenty-ninth at noon at the Dale Robertson Center. So for any of you folks that would like to go over and have a little food and fun and fellowship, uh, they're going to be having a program over there, uh, once again, June the twenty-ninth at noon. And Yukon here just recently, uh, took home four awards for that Frontier County Awards Luncheon. And, uh, Yukon now has four more awards to be proud of, uh, with all of our others. Yukon organizations won four awards, uh, as I just mentioned, at the annual Frontier County Marketing Association, uh, luncheon. Uh, the awards that we, uh, were awarded were outstanding event, which was Rock the Root here in, uh, Yukon, uh, outstanding attraction, which is the Express Clydesdales, and outstanding publication, the Chisholm Trail and Crawfish Festival brochure of the city of Yukon, and outstanding locally owned businesses, which was the Express Ranches. So we appreciate each and every one of them, uh, to make Yukon the wonderful place that it is. Uh, I'm very proud to be here and, uh, and don't ever mind saying so to anyone. With that, uh, with no other business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.